Read an opening statement.
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, March 11, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on January 15, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 15, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 15, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Massa?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Sayah?
Here.
Mr. Moretti has been excused, and Chairman Nansen?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Troply might swear in the professionals, please. Approval amendments, regular meeting, January 28, 2019. Eligible voters Hughes, Massa, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell.
Oh, Mr. Massa.
Mr. Massa. Can we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes. Thank you. Any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Resolutions, case number BA 1835, MLMBJ LLC Rigerio, this is granting a certificate of nonconformity. Eligible voters...
Skip that first one. It's mister's. I think that first thing is mister's.
Mister's, okay. Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente, seconded by Mr. Orozco. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes. Case number BA 1830, 6601 Highway 9 Associates LLC. Use variance, bulk variance, preliminary, final major site plan approval. Eligible voters Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I will step down at this point in time for the Kowalski application, and I'll invite Mr. Miller to come on up and take over the helm. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Board members, I just want to remind you that Mr. Ron Kachara was the attorney stepping in on this because Mr. Troply had to recuse himself. Mr. Miller is associate of Mr. Kachara, which will be filling in for the balance of this application.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Okay. Okay, application before the board, case number BA 1802, Robert and Dolores Kowalski. It's a use variance. Application, Robert and Dolores Kowalski is applicant owner seeking a use variance with bulk variances to continue the use of the property for roofing business, which has been in use on the property since 1991. Interior storage of materials in residence on the premises known as Block 229, Lot 6, 26 McGill Road. This application was originally scheduled for May 21, 2018, when it was rescheduled to June 11, 2018, with a new notice. On June 11, 2018, this application was rescheduled to September 17, 2018, with the, with new notice required. After some testimony on September 17, 2018, the application was carried to November 26, 2018. On November 26, it was carried to January 14, with no further notice. On January 14, it was carried to March 11, with no further notice. Expiration date, March 31, 2019. Eligible voters Hughes, San Clemente, Orozco, Nansen, Mr. Mertens is certified, and so has Mr. Massa. Mr. Kaplan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, we were here, the last time we were here, there was an objector, and we met with the objector and made changes to placate all his problems with the application. Those plans have been put on the plans by Mr. Geller, the engineer, and he's ready to continue his testimony from the last time to explain those changes and to bring you up to date.
Okay. Mr. Geller, you were previously sworn, and your credentials were placed on the record, if I recall.
Thank you.
There, no, you're okay. Okay. Mr. Geller, could you tell the board what changes were made to the plans since the last time we were here?
In essence, the plans were changed to accommodate the objector's concerns, as well as certain comments that the board made at the September, September, September of 2018 hearing. The changes that were made consist of... One second. Excuse me if I was going to start over, but, okay. There had been a one-way circulation... Am I being picked up okay?
No. Drag that mic that's in the middle. Just pull it towards you guys.
Okay.
Doesn't have much wire to lead. Can't pull it much further than that.
Mike, we got a mic pointer.
Yeah, just put it in the middle.
Thank you. There had been a one-way circulation drive around the westerly side of the front storage building, and to address concerns of the adjacent property owner to the west, that drive will be eliminated. The drive will remain to service an overhead door on the rear storage building, but otherwise, all traffic using the site will traverse along the easterly side of the buildings, and then utilize the rear area, and then utilize the same driveway to exit. Secondly, there was a farmland buffer established along the westerly property line for the length of the project that is in commercial use. That would be the Kowalski Roofing Business, and that would extend roughly to the front court.
Mike, you've got to use your mic.
Yeah, use the handheld, please.
The extent of the easement is approximately 40 feet or so beyond the front storage building, and that buffer is intended to be 50-foot wide wherever possible, and it has been done so on the plan. There are exceptions in the area of the existing buildings and the existing use. That buffer easement is variable in width, as depicted on the plans. Also shown is the planting of a buffer. With plants in that area of the existing buildings, that would be planted in amongst the existing trees. There would be no tree removal, and although they're depicted in locations on the plan, the actual locations would be determined in the field to provide the best screen.
And that will be via Ms. Sparrow?
Yes. Well, we'll get to her report, but in general, we agree with all of the recommendations in Sherry's report. We currently propose about 54 evergreen trees, a mixture of cedars and arborvitae, that would provide the screen. Additionally, there's a 150-foot-long fence provided from the front of the front storage building to almost the rear of the rear storage building, and that would be six-foot-high vinyl solid fence, and that would be to buffer, additionally buffer the use. That would be inside the planted buffer. That would be on the Kowalski's property side. Additionally, as requested by the objector, there's been specific notes added to the plan that address the operational, that's proposed. The first, it's on the bottom of your use variance plan, and it's three notes. One is the hours of operation would be 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Beginning and ending hours may vary slightly based on the season. Like in the summer, it may go a little bit later, but typically, those are the hours. And there's no business activity to be conducted on Saturdays or Sundays. Number two, there will be no heavy equipment or vehicles operated on the site, with the exception of a Bobcat excavator, which is used by the owner for snow removal and crating of the gravel areas, and a boom lift truck, which they use for their business. Trucks regularly used for the business are pickups or small utility trucks. And number three is that the rear garage bay, the rear garage has a bay door on the westerly side, and it's been agreed between the two property owners that that door would be closed when there's any operation that necessitates using that bay door. In other words, they'll use it, open it, shut it. It'll be shut if they're doing anything inside the building in that area. Lastly, lighting was discussed. On the current plan, you'll see a light in the rear of the rear building that has already been lowered, as requested by the neighbor, to a height of about, I think it's seven feet, eight feet, sorry. And the additional concerns, since we submitted this plan, the objector had additional concerns, and they were two existing light on the front building that's over the center of the building, over an overhead door that exists there. They were recently upgraded to LEDs, and the property owner had some issue with that. Mr. Kowalski has agreed that they will be motion-activated and will be on a two-minute timer. In other words, after two minutes, they'll go off, or they'll be handled mechanically, handled manually.
Mike, can you just clarify where those lights are? Are they along the west side of the rear buildings?
They're on the south side of the front building. There's two lights over the overhead door in the middle where the loading dock is. Those are the two I spoke about. And they will also be re-aimed to aim more away from the adjacent neighbor. And there are also two lights on the rear building on the easterly sides, which may have, they're not yet upgraded, but they may be upgraded to LEDs, but they're on the east side. They have no impact whatsoever on the property to the west. In addition to those changes, certain changes were made. There was some concern previously, there was an accessory structure to the northwesterly of the rear building. It was a 1,227-square-foot structure consisting of containers covered by a roof. There were also several containers in that area and a concrete pad. Since the September meeting, all those improved, all those have been removed from the site. The one exception is there are three trailers, containers, rather, are proposed east of the rear building, and they are the 8-by-20 containers. Mr. Kowalski has ladders and scaffolding that he needs ready access to, and that is for the purpose of that type of storage, of that kind of material.
Mike, it might be helpful if you actually showed them exactly what you're talking about, because number one, I can't see that board through both of your bodies at all, and number two, my eyes are not going to work that far anyway, but like, you're rattling off this information. I have no idea where you're talking about, what you're talking about. It's very difficult to follow, and I'm looking at the plan. So I can guarantee you that if there are people in the audience here that are interested in this application, they have no idea what you're talking about.
I'll, I'll point up here.
Point at this, this one, if you don't mind.
Mike, let me pull up the previous iteration of the plan, so you can refer to that.
But he's rattling it off 150 miles an hour, not really, and I can't see what he's pointing to because your body and his body is in the way. And if there are people that are sitting up there that are interested in what he's talking about, the back of the board is facing them, so they can't tell what exactly you're referring to.
No problem.
It's becoming a little cumbersome.
No problem. What I'm referring to is the prior plan, and Charlie has it up on the board, but let me just do this.
This is the previously provided, right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
The prior plan, there, I need more hands. The prior plan showed an existing storage structure, containers, and a concrete pad. Those have all been removed from the site. The one exception is three 8-by-20 trailers on the current plan are proposed east of the rear building, and that's the only exception. All of the other structures, as far as containers, have been removed. There's one other addition that I'm going to address, okay?
Mike, on the plan that I'm looking at, the note says three box trailers, two open trailers, and four recycling containers.
Yes, that's in the area in the back. That's my second change since the board meeting. The previously proposed 30-by-110 area for the parking of trailers and motor vehicles, that now is proposed only as a 20-by-110 feet. Jen, can you see that on the plan?
It says 100 feet outside.
Oh, 20 by, excuse me, 20 by 100 feet for the parking of three trailers, three box trailers, two open trailers, and four recycling containers. There would be no motor vehicle parking in that area.
Mike, when you say recycling containers, what do you, dumpsters? Are we talking about small recycling containers that you would have for like residential?
No, they're really, no, they're like container, that flat truck, flatbed type containers that are dropped off.
They're roll-offs.
Yes, accumulates the aluminum or any materials, and then recycles it according to their material, and that's where they're stored till they're picked up. But there's no motor vehicle parking in that area.
The three box trailers, okay, there's two sets of three box, two sets of three box trailers, is that correct?
Yes, I forgot to bring a picture. I had a picture of that and everything. I forgot to make a copy of it. But it's back there now. There's three box trailers, two open trailers, and four containers.
Okay, and then the proposal is to move three other trailers?
Three of the trailers that were formerly on the westerly property line are relocated to east of the rear building. That is it. I'll address the planning variance and the engineers' and planners' reports, and we'll go from there, okay?
Before you move forward, is there any questions from the professionals? Jen?
Yes.
Charles?
Not right now.
Sherry?
What about the board? Do y'all have any questions so far?
No.
Okay. Kate?
Okay. As far as the use variance application, this is, I believe, a result of a code enforcement violation that was cited on the property owner, probably as a result of the adjacent owner, but we're not sure if that was divulged to us. The current application requests the approval to continue the historic use of the property. As you're aware, the applicants have owned it since 1991, and they've been using it for 27-plus years now, and they're decided, so they're here asking for your approval to continue that use. There is no new building construction or expansion. In fact, the removal of that covered container area resulted in the removal of 1,227 square feet of storage structures. Also, I would note that at the time that the surveys were done and the freshwater delineations were done for this application, we had previously found that there were storage containers parked in the wetlands buffer, and those have all been removed from the buffer area in lieu of the proposed area we now show on the plans. So we do need a D1 use variance to permit the use, that would be the roofing business aspects, in an ARE3 zone that restricts that type of use. We're also asking for a D1 variance for the two principal uses on the same lot, the existing residential dwelling, which has existed there since 1950, and the storage aspects for the owner's roofing business in the northerly rear portion of the site. In fact, in reviewing my prior testimony, I addressed the 1966 approval that approved the property for use as a dog pound and kennel. At that same time, the zoning board made a finding that the variants for the two uses on one site were approved, because they acknowledged the existence of the house in that resolution. Nonetheless, it will be demonstrated that the site is particularly suited for the proposed use, and the proposed purposes of zoning would be advanced by this application. The first consideration I'd like the board to consider is the history of the zoning of this property. Back in 1979 zoning map, this property was on the industrial zone, I-zone at that time. It's been revised now to the current SED, Special Economic Development Zone. The industrial zone existed on this site on the east side of Asbury Road, including the lands west of the railroad, east of the railroad, strike that, east. In 1989, the zoning of this area, west of the railroad track was revised to ARE3, and the lands east of the railroad track were later rezoned to ARE6. The history of the use of the property, the dwelling in the front has been in use as, since it was constructed in the 1950s. From 1966 to 91, the rear portion of the property was used for a dog pound and kennel, owned and operated by Community Dog Control. Since 1991, the rear portion has been used by the applicant for storage and parking for the Kowalski Roofing Business. The reason this site is particularly suited for the proposed use is the site has historically been used as a mixed use with a dwelling and a non-residential use. There's no expansion of any of the buildings on the site that are proposed, and in fact, I believe the use can be seen as less intense than the previously approved dog pound kennel use of the site. In fact, if the, it's back, looking back in time, but I know the board currently hears a lot of applications for certificates of nonconformity, and hindsight is 2020, but if the applicant had done that in 1991, they would have been entitled to that, because zoning was only changed in 1989, and I believe there's a two-year window that was usually implemented to ask for a certificate of nonconformity.
One year.
One year? Whatever. One year.
Well, I mean, that does make a difference if you're talking about 89 to 91. It's 89 to 91, it's a one-year window. That's what the law says.
Okay. But they still could have come to the zoning board for that.
They could have.
The advancements of the purposes of zoning that we see is that the approval of this use would advance this purpose of zoning subsection G by providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. This use has been existing use, having been in use without incident since 1991, with a dwelling and the existing roofing business using the same property, and as such, we believe it's appropriate for this location. The purpose of zoning for the advancement of light air and open space is advanced by this application. The use of this site is not intense. It's a 6.86 acre lot, and it's more than sufficient. There's ample open space and conservation areas by preserving the wetlands, providing the buffer on the westerly side as can be provided, and that's about it. We feel that this use can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good vicinity and neighborhood. This use has existed in this site since 1991. I previously testified to the other uses in the ARE zones in the vicinity of this site that have either existed or been approved since the adoption of the ARE zones, those being the Jersey Coast Fire Equipment on Asbury Road, north of the site, and then east of the site on the Will Road, the Allied Environmental signage business, and the Service Works also further on east on McGill Road.
Mr. Geller, why do you have that aerial photograph up there?
It used to be up.
Yes. Can you just put the aerial back up for a second?
Sorry.
Could you point out to the board where the railroad track is?
Yeah, the railroad track forms the easterly boundary of our site, runs in a north and south direction.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, can we mark into evidence the new exhibit real quick? Should have done that to begin with. Sorry about that.
The aerial?
No.
The new plan?
The new site plan.
Okay.
Chairman, I think that was provided as part of the revised submittals that you got.
No, I know, but it needs to be marked.
It doesn't if it's submitted as part of the package.
It was submitted as part of the package. I don't think it needs an estimate.
We always sign the exhibit.
The next question.
That's a good question, yes.
Now, you're past that. You're up to A12 already. Is this before the 13? A13? But you have an A12. After those, you gave me today. We're up to A12, so.
Yeah, we are up, it looks like, to A12, so the next exhibit will be A13.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geller, you had spoken about the variance request. Do you need a variance for the farmland buffer?
Well, we provided the best we could. We provided a 50-foot buffer.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
You still need a variance, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
As I described it, Mr. Chairman, the farmland buffer has been provided to be 50 feet as where existing trees are, as can be provided, and then the rest has been filled in and is variable width to recognize the existence of the existing buildings.
Agreed, but technically, the buffer would need to be along the entire property line at 50 feet, and it is not. So it absolutely needs a variance.
Yes. Well, the reason it was drawn the way it was, and one of the engineer's comments in his report was to make, extend the front portion of that to represent the existing tree line.
Now, Mike, I think you're... Now, Mike, I think you're mischaracterizing what it said in the letter. So that was just a suggesting based off what you showed, but Jen, what she stated is correct. The 50-foot buffer is required along the entire western property line there. The suggestion that I made was, if you look to the southern end of the farmland buffer there, you have an existing portion of vegetation that's there. We recommended, should the board look favorably on granting a variable farmland buffer, extending it to encapsulate that triangular portion, preserve that tree, the wooded area there. Unless Sherry has other opinions on that.
I went out to the site last week, and that area that Charlie was just mentioning is all bamboo. So I had noted in my letter, you know, it seems there's an ordinance in Howell that you have to remove invasive species, bamboo included. So we definitely don't want to preserve the bamboo, but we could preserve the area and revert it, you know, back to, you know, wooded. They could move some of the plant material there, but I do think they should try and eradicate the bamboo.
We would agree to expand the buffer as recommended. We are asking for a variance for the front portion, because basically, if you look at the site, it's divided that the southerly portion is residential in nature, with the dwelling and the accessory garage across from it, and it's residential, abutting of farm, and the rear portion is commercial or for the roofing business, warehouse-oriented. And we know it's not the normal procedure of the board, and it requires a variance, which we're requesting, that due to the residential use of the southerly portion of the site, we're asking that that buffer be revised as recommended by the engineer, supplemented as recommended by your certified tree expert, but not go the whole length of the front. Because there's the driveway in there, and there's also the garage, et cetera. So I think that's grounds for reasonable exception on that variance.
Okay. Sherry, does that bamboo go all the way to McGill Road?
No. It was almost, you know, just in one section right there where that bump out is. So I don't know, maybe it's not so old, and it wasn't planted that long ago, I'm not really sure, but it has not invaded that whole area.
Okay.
So it is, it can be controlled.
Okay.
The other, I want to finish my negative criteria.
Yes, sir.
The board should look at that the applicant has worked with the adjacent neighbor to resolve his concerns and any issues. And we've previously testified about the low intensity of the use, the low traffic volume is basically the owner goes in in the morning, sometimes an employee comes, usually they do not, and it's a very low-intensity site. And we want the board to recognize that, that in that way, it fits in better with the neighborhood than a highly intensified, highly-used site. There would be no traffic detriments based on that particular comment I just made, and we don't believe that the use, if approved, will be a nuisance to the area. And there's no detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance.
And based on what?
Well, the fact that the site has been there, it's been previously granted variance relief for a nonresidential use.
But I think that when you came here the last time and you made that same representation, that's not what the paperwork says. So I have a hard time with this reconciliation of the zone plan and zoning ordinance when the site was zoned large lot residential in 1989, which is over 20 years ago, and no effort has been made until a complaint has been filed to certify the site as pre-existing nonconforming. So I don't know that I agree, just because back 40 years ago, somebody said, okay, you could put a dog kennel there, that that means that today, in 2019, that there's no detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Things in Howell have changed dramatically over the past decade, let alone 20 years, and at no point, and as you're well aware, the town has engaged in master plan amendments at least once, if not twice, per year, almost every year over the course of the past several years, and never once was this area reevaluated. So that tells me that, yeah, well, maybe historically it was industrial, but it has been large lot residential for many, many years, and there hasn't been any effort made on behalf of the township to make a change to that situation. So you're gonna need to give me more, and I will just jump in now anyway, because I don't think you've met your burden on either side of the prong. You need to give me more. I don't agree that this is sufficient space at appropriate location. It's not an appropriate location. It's zoned large lot residential. So I need more on both particular suitability, positive criteria, and negative criteria for me to be able to tell this board that I agree with your testimony.
If I may, we have another witness going to talk to the negative and positive criteria.
Okay. So you have a planner coming?
I have Mr. Puck coming.
That's not, he's not a planner?
That's okay.
No, it's not okay. I need planning testimony from an actual planner who is sitting next to you, justifying the positive and negative criteria. He can't testify as a planner to the positive and negative criteria. Sorry.
I submit, Mr. Chairman, that he's testified in support of the board's numerous times, always qualified as an expert in the field of real estate and in factoring plants, been accepted by numerous boards, including this board in the past, and should be allowed to vote, and I believe that's the board's decision.
Well, I don't think that's correct from a legal standpoint. The planning testimony under the MLUL for all land use boards must be provided by a planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. So I don't, I don't think that's correct. And I just want to jump back as far as the use variance that was granted. We had made a comment on the record previously, and I just want to reiterate that now. In 1966, that was pre-municipal land use law. The, what was granted previously was not a use variance, it was actually a use permit. And a use permit actually stated at that time that the proposed use for the dog pound and kennel, that it would be permitted for the site. So there wasn't a use variance issued for that, there was a use permit issued for that, but again, that was pre-MLUL. So, so I don't think that contradicts the testimony, and it doesn't, doesn't change the fact of the testimony, they're asking for two D1 variances. I think that's correct, but I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you.
But if they're planning positive and negative criteria for the D1, for the D1s, multiple D1s, we need, we need, the board needs to hear from a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey.
Well, considering that, I don't think that the board should not consider a special reason by the fact that the property, by variance or use permit, has been non-residentially used from 1966 to 1991, when these people bought the property. Yes, in 1989, the zone changed, but the property continued to operate as a business, albeit not with approval of the township. But you just can't disregard the fact that it was nonresidential and a mixed use for all that time.
Mr. Geller, I don't think our professionals are saying that. What I, what I hear Jennifer saying is that there should be planning testimony in depth of why both positive for this and negative for it, it should be on the record. There's not enough proof that's been placed on the record. Am I correct, Jen?
That's, that's correct.
One moment?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sir? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I understand the board's position, I understand what Ms. Beam has recommended to the board and all that. We'd be more than glad to come back with a planner to go through this. It is an unusual situation, because most of the time, the board's faced with a piece of land of proposed use, and a professional opines that it's not going to be detrimental to the zone plan, and it's going to meet the negative and the positive criteria, and you look at it on paper and you say, well, maybe it will, maybe it won't, and you take his opinion, or his or her opinion, and you go from there. That's not the situation that we have here, though. The situation we have here is, it's already here. It's been there for over 20 years, and until, you know, honestly, until a house was built next to it and all the trees were cut down, it just was there and caused no problems, and had no detriment, nobody complained about it. Has things changed? Yes, things have changed. You know, civilization has come into the wilderness, the houses have grown near this mixed use, but those buildings are there. To say it's going to be a residential, residential with these two huge cinder block buildings next to a railroad track? That's realistically, but we'll bring a planner.
We're not disputing that, not at all, but we need the proofs on the record.
I understand.
Because eventually, if this gets overturned, or somebody comes in and complains, we haven't done our due diligence.
I understand.
And basically, that's what we're asking you to do. And I know where Jen's coming from, she needs, you know, I don't think it's Medici, but, you know, we need the positive and negative criteria on the record in depth, and, you know, and it, by the MLUL, it requires a licensed planner to do that. And, you know, we're gonna go on the recommendations from our professionals, and that's, you know, we're not disputing that this hasn't been an ongoing operation there. There's no dispute to that. We know that, we know the history of it. But there's gotta be testimony placed on the record, both positive, negative, and have those proofs to where Jennifer could look over to the board and says, yes, I agree, and, you know, they have met the burden. But right now, she's telling us it won't meet the burden. So, you know, I'm gonna leave that call up to you.
Well, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity, and we will get that planner to present all that to the board for your deliberation.
Appreciate that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment, and actually, two comments on Mr. Kaplan's statement. First, I'm not familiar, under the law, where, where we, where testimony comes in from a nonplanner, and it's stated that, well, it's been running for X amount of years, so that's enough for the use variance. That's not the criteria under the law, it's certainly not the criteria that the land use boards in Howell have certainly followed, number one. Number two, the fact that the applicant is coming in here for use variances, for a use that already exists and has existed for a long time, that in no way, under the law, changes the obligation for the applicant to meet the proofs of the positive and negative criterias. We as a board don't punish an applicant for not having that variance relief coming before us, not in any way, but under the law, the board is still obligated to analyze and hear testimony as to the positive and negative criteria, and it must make a determination based upon that testimony as to whether the applicant meets the proofs for the use variance.
Great. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Kaplan, you wanna set another date?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject real quick, I just want to touch on a couple things from our letter. Hopefully, that guides the applicant to have that information ready for the next meeting. A lot of it's from the letter. As far as the buffer, we definitely would recommend that that be dedicated as a conservation easement with markers, so that there's no future disturbance.
Now, which, which buffer, you're talking, the wetland?
So that's the farmland buffer, the farmlands buffer along the western property line, but then also, with the wetlands in the back and the 50-foot buffer, we would request that the applicant also dedicate that as a conservation easement. I know previous iteration of the plans, there was some storage of trailers and containers within there. Dedicating that and putting conservation markers should go a long way, and hopefully preventing that from occurring in the future.
That is per ordinance, too.
Yes, that is, yes. And that goes along with getting an LOI for the wetlands delineation. Just some questions on circulation of the site, you know, making sure that the fire barrel is on board with the 20-foot wide, two-way aisles, making sure that a fire truck can make the turning movement at the back, so the northern side of the rear garage there. And then, you know, just some more testimony regarding the operations of the site, number of employees, what kind of vehicles, I think you said they got pickups trucks coming there, where are they parking, what's the material that they're gonna be parking on, any type of vehicles. The board typically likes to see concrete or asphalt. If it's diesel, the board typically likes to see a concrete pad. For that 20-by-100-foot parking area, if it's gonna be reserved just for trailers and recycling containers, the board would typically like to see that on some type of gravel or DGA pad, just, and then, you know, any other equipment. So you said you got a Bobcat for snow removal, and then a boom lift, being clear on where that equipment is stored. If it's inside the building, the board might not take any issue with it, but if it is outside the building, they'll want to know where it's stored, is it on pads, you know, is it properly screened from neighbors, that type of thing. That's all I have for right now.
Okay. Jen, other than the positive, negative? Sherry?
Just to reiterate what's in my letter, I did ask for specific notes regarding the installation of the trees in the buffer there. You know, it's gravel, it's a driveway, it's compacted, just wanted them to provide some more information on how they're gonna revert that area to planting area. And I also mentioned that some of the areas in where the trees are proposed are, you know, they're really, nothing much is there, you know, fallen tree, a lot of vines, you know, so really, they might want to clean up some of the vines, they're invasive, just so the vines don't swallow these new trees. So just, you know, nothing really, though.
Okay. Got it? Okay. Okay, what kind of date do we have? Meeting date?
The next available date is March 25th. And April 22nd. Those are the two dates Eileen gave me.
Well, I don't think we'll be able to get a planner by March 25th to come in, review it, and do everything. That's only two weeks. That might be unrealistic. April 22nd. So what was, April 22nd?
April 22nd.
April 22nd? Have you been with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
April 22nd? Without additional notice, right? It's been carried?
And then we do need an extension of time.
That'd be granted.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for, therefore, for case BA 18-02, Robert and Dolores Kowalski, that matter is being carried. It's a use variance application, a bifurcated use variance application. That matter is being carried to the board's regular meeting to be held at April 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in this room. For any members of the public that are here for this application, please be advised that the next hearing date for this application will be on that date, April 22nd, 2019. There will be no further notice provided as to this application. This is your notice that the application is being carried to April 22nd, 2019, at 7:30 in this room.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we're gonna take a little short break.
The zoning board is reconvened.
Okay. We're gonna change the order real quick. We're gonna go to case number BA 1833, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church. It's a use variance, bulk variance, and minor subdivision. Application of Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, as applicant and owner seeking a minor subdivision approval with bulk variance to create two new 15,000-square-foot residential building lines, and a use variance for deviation from a conditional use standard and expansion of an existing nonconforming use, namely, the Heavenwood Monastery School in the existing one-story education building on premises known as Block 59 Lot 53, or 434 Aldridge Road. Expiration date, May 8th, 2019. Mr. Kaplan?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here on behalf of Prince of Peace Church for our application. And as our first witness, we have Mr. Michael Geller, engineer.
Okay, do you have any other witnesses at this time?
Yes, we're going to have Annette Moscaro and Marina Marasco, who is a professor of structural engineering.
Want to swear everybody up?
We're going to swear any witnesses.
I do.
Annette, A-N-N-E. Marasco, M-A-R-E-S-C-A.
Maria. Carrasco, C-A-R-R-A-S-C-R.
Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geller, for the, I know we've heard from you for a bunch of times. For the record, just place your educational and experience background.
Yes, I graduated from Stevens Institute in 1975. I have about forty-four years of experience in civil engineering and planning. I'm a professional engineer since 1980, I'm a professional planner since 1983. I've testified before this board in both capacities many times, usually accepted. And I have also been a consulting engineer and planner to planning boards in Howell Township in the eighties and Lacy Township, Ocean County during the 1990s and 2000s.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you very much.
Now, to what capacity, Mr. Kaplan, will Mr. Geller be testifying to both planner and planning and engineering?
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Okay, Mr. Geller, have you prepared the plans on this application, correct?
Geller Civil and Company prepared the plans for the conceptual grading plan, which is part of your file. And under the direction of Geller Civil and Company, Martin A. Grant Surveying prepared the minor subdivision map that stated August 29th, 2018, and signed September 13th, 2018.
Could you give us an existing site description of the property?
Yes, this site is known as Tax Lot 5 in Block 59. It's also known as 434 Aldrich Road. It's located on the northerly side of Aldrich Road, just east of the ramp to Route 9 northbound. It also fronts on the easterly side of Woodland Drive, which dead ends just north of Aldrich Road. I've posted the minor subdivision plan on the board. You also have it in your files, and it's up on the screens, I see. The construction of the ramp to Route 9 in the late 1980s required a taking by the New Jersey Department of Transportation from the frontage of this property and the elimination of the intersection of Woodland Drive. Woodland Drive used to intersect with Aldrich Road. At that time, about 9,792 square feet or .22 acres was taken from this property. This property is situated in the R2 residential zone, which requires a lot area of 20,000 square feet and a minimum lot frontage of 100 feet. I have an exhibit I'd like to pass out to the board, if I may. What number are we at?
A eleven.
I have copies for all of them.
Okay. Mr. Burton?
Board Secretary will...
Right behind you. Mark, when I'll get to the secretary. Okay. A eleven? Okay. A eleven, Z-Pick.
Do you have two more?
Sure. The reason I gave out that zoning map was to depict the R2 zone as it exists around the property. The yellow circle encircles the property, and then the R2 zone includes that north of Aldrich Road and extends south of Aldrich Road to include the park and ride. And prior to that, the R2 zone was the R3 zone. So, basically, it's our feeling and opinion that when the zoning map was drafted and the R2 zone was delineated, it purposely, or for some reason, included the church and park and ride when it could have easily been left R3. But having said that, we're not arguing that. That's just a matter of fact. The Lot 5 has an area of 5.59 acres. That's after the DOT taking and has a frontage of 500.44 feet on Aldrich Road and 492.21 feet on Woodland Drive. Property conforms to all the bulk requirements of the R2 zone, as well as the conditional use requirements for churches, which are permitted as a conditional use in the R2 zone. Lot 5 is currently occupied by the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church facility. It's a one-story house of worship on the westward of the three buildings. There's three buildings along the Aldrich Road frontage. There's the house of worship. There's also a one-story education building in the middle, and there's a one-story parish hall on the easterly side. The site is accessed from Aldrich Road by a driveway, two-way driveway, between the education building and the parish hall, provides access to a parking area in the rear. There's also a circulation drive for drop-offs and pick-offs in front of the education building and the church. And there's also a playground behind the parish center and a small shed. The existing site is served by public water and sewer from facilities in Aldrich Road. There are no environmental constraints that would affect the subdivision of the property. I know that your engineer and planner have commented about the New Jersey State maps showing wetlands in the easterly portion of the site. We've reviewed that, environmental personnel has reviewed that. We find there's no wetlands, and we intend, if a condition by the board would require, we'd file a letter of absence or presence from the DEP.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's actually the northwest corner of the property where they're proposing the two residential lots, where it's mapped as wetlands on the NJGEO web database. Now, that's not to say that's 100%. There's always wetlands there. Typically, the applicants go out there, they have a licensed professional or someone with the environmental background to do a wetlands delineation. Then they go to NJDEP, like we're all familiar, and get a letter of interpretation, whether there's wetlands there, and then also what associated buffer would be required there. So, to say that there's no environmental constraints, I don't think the applicant can firmly say that right now. I think we need to see an actual delineation from a professional with the report, and then an LOI, you know, from the DEP stating the presence or lack of wetlands, and if there is, what the buffer would be required. Now, that's something that we can require as a board, as, you know, a condition of the approval, but to say that there's no wetlands on the site, I think is a little bit misleading at this point, without further, you know, determination.
Mr. Kaplan, you have a problem having that as a condition?
No.
No, when I say there was no constraints, it means we evaluated ourselves. We have to go to the DEP for formally acknowledging the absence of wetlands. Sometimes, there's no wetlands delineation, it's just an absence letter that we have to get. But I acknowledge what Mr. Conliffe said.
I guess the concern would be, based upon our review of the GEO web, which I agree with Charlie, is not 100% accurate, those two lots look unbuildable. So, I don't understand the purpose of the subdivision if those two lots are 100% constrained. You know, so what's the purpose of creating two lots that you can't build on?
Well, they wouldn't formally be created until the wetlands LOI is obtained.
I understand that, but I mean, at the same time, it's kind of like, there's a lot of, there's a lot to the application, and the concern is, is that, based upon the information that I have, and I know Mike said that someone went out there, but I haven't gotten any additional information. Have you gotten any additional information? So, I have nothing that tells me that these lots are even developable at all. So, why go through the pain of listening to the subdivision if they're not going to be buildable? Then why bother subdividing them? Like, to me, some of this stuff, and this is not just directed at this applicant, this is directed in general, I feel like a lot of times, we get applications that really shouldn't come here until they've done more due diligence, and so, we're put in a position of making a decision that, you know, yeah, it could be conditioned on approval. So, let's say we approve this application and they are wet. Then you approved the subdivision that is rendering two lots not buildable. I don't, like, there's got to be a point where some work has to go in before people come here.
Do you have a report? Or can you get a report?
We can get a letter of interpretation, which is a letter of interpretation indicating the absence of wetlands. I mean, my experience with these GEO web maps, a lot of times when there's a treat area, it's picked up as wetlands. It may not be wet. We've gone in there, we dug a few soil borings, we determined that it's not. We'll have an environmentalist confirm it and file an application. Whether you're creating lots and wetlands or not, until it's proved to be buildable, nobody can draw a building permit. I do understand the saving of time, but we feel this is a very straightforward application, and there has been a lot of work that's gone into getting to where we are today, and I don't know why we shouldn't hear it, but I go with what the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Jennifer, are you basing your decision solely on the LOI?
They don't have an LOI.
I know that, but it's...
We looked on the DEP database, which is typically used as a general guide. I would never, if I was in Mike's position, I would never 100% base a site plan off of what comes up on the DEP website, because it's based on very general information. It's not typically done site-by-site. It's actually, it's not done site-by-site. So, every time you see something on, but it is something that is utilized initially to look at the viability of an application, and then, as was provided into testimony, they sent an environmentalist out there to take a look at it. So, if that holds true and they submit an application to the DEP, they could come back saying, nope, there are no wetlands in this area, I just, I don't have anything.
I realize that, and did the map state whether it was absent or present?
The GEO map shows the area wet.
Wet, because I did do a site review on that, and I walked the whole entire property, more than just the two lots, and I didn't see anything that indicated it was wet. It's sandy, I know, but there's no swamp cabbage, nothing wet.
I, I mean...
And I'm not saying that it's not wet, just from a visual inspection.
Right.
But I'd like to proceed based on the LOI.
Well, they don't, they don't, let me be very clear, they do not have an LOI.
No, I know that. If they get it, though, and it's good, and we proceed with the case, then it could move along.
Correct.
But the way I'm taking it is, you want to stop it right now.
No, no, it's up to you. I'm just bringing that up as a concern, because I was a little concerned that information, you know, typically, if I were on the private side and I had a site that showed this area as wet, I would have provided information to the board, whether it be an LOI or not, documentation from an environmental professional saying, we were out there on this date, we looked at this, there's no hydrology, there's no vegetation, there's no modeling of the soil, there's no this, there's no that, to say, there isn't anything, and then they would obviously have to go get that officially determined by the DEP at some point. We just don't have that information.
Right.
Mr., that's why I was asking if they have their environmental report, you know, from your environmentalists.
We don't have it yet, but let me just say one thing. The wetlands is one aspect. There's another aspect that sanitary sewage would be needed for these two lots. That's another lengthy process before the DEP. But as a church, and trying to save their expenditure of funding, we're trying to see if the board's inclined to grant the subdivision for the two lots before they expend the money to go to DEP for an LOI, before they expend the money to design and get permitting for a sewer extension. If they don't have the comfort level that they will have the two lots, which we feel the proofs are present to approve, why are we spending the church's money when it's going out the window? And, I mean, they're not developers.
No, I understand it, but you're saying that the sewer, they're going to need a DEP?
Either, we need further approval from the Howell Township Municipal Utility Department.
Okay, Howell Township.
Well, depending on the length, it may have to go to DEP, but it definitely has to go to Howell Township and the Madison River Regional Sewage Authority, yes.
Okay. Now, where would that sewer come from?
I'm going to get that. There's an existing sewer manhole at the intersection of Woodland Drive and Rustic Drive. This development, the Woodland Drive, Rustic Drive, Crest Drive development, is, there's so many holes in the donut on sanitary service, and this is in accordance with my conversations with the Howell Engineering Department, we would have to do an extension to service these two lots and provide lots across the street as well, because those currently don't have sewer either.
Now, would that be, would that be gravity?
Yes, would all be gravity, yes. Having said that, let me continue if I may.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject to that, too. That's a crucial part of this application, too, because in the current condition, the applicant is proposing two undersized lots. Now, if they can't get sewer approval to extend the main there, they would be required to provide a septic system, and as the board knows, there's a minimum lot area requirement of 40,000 square feet for lots serviced by public sewer. So, that adds another wrinkle into the application. If, you know, if they can't get sewer extension to provide to those two lots, you know, we're talking about a whole nother set of variances there.
The applicant understands that and is willing to accept that as a condition. We understood that coming here.
Yeah, I read that in the report. Do you all want to move forward?
Does that mean if they...
Do you all want to move forward just based on conditions?
Does that mean, though, if they can't get sewer and we proceed tonight, they may have to come back for the septic part?
That's not going to happen. They will have to come back, because that's...
Yes.
In order to create septic systems on 15,000 square foot lots, they would need a variance.
Yes. Well, it's not up to this board to grant that. You know, we're going to grant the variance, but it's up to Monmouth County to give approvals for the septic. That's, that's the big hurdle.
Isn't that a board of health issue?
That's what I'm saying, it's going to be up to Monmouth County. No, but we have to grant a variance because it's an undersized lot.
I don't have a problem, as long as we have the conditions based on our approval, you know, just...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm a resident in this area, not far, been here 25 years, and, you know, two lots at 15,000 square feet, 100 by 150, with sewer and water, they're nice lots, you know, they're true R3 lots. I mean, look what we did just across the street at the park and ride, and we squeezed in onto R3 and gave them less than, you know, 15,000 square feet. You know, this is not, nothing that we would suffer if provided that they get the sewer, they get the water, and they don't have to extend out.
Okay. But do you all want to move forward with the application?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Kaplan?
Geller, if you could...
Yeah, houses of worship are, and typical ancillary uses, such as the parish hall and the Sunday school, are permitted in the R2 zone as a conditional use, and they're subject to certain conditional use standards, one of which is a minimum lot area of five acres.
You know, they're true R3 lots. I mean, look what we did just across the street at the parking ride, and we squeezed in under R3 and gave them less than, you know, 15,000 square feet. You know, this is not, nothing that we would suffer, provided that they get the sewer, they get the water, and they don't have to extend out.
Okay. But do you all want to move forward with the application?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Hi, Captain.
Houses of worship are, and typical ancillary uses, such as the parish hall and the Sunday school, are permitted in the R2 zone as a conditional use, and they're subject to certain conditional use standards, one of which is a minimum lot area of five acres. And, I would note that the existing buildings and the side yard to the southerlymost building, the parish hall, do not comply with those standards, and those variances were previously approved by a 1984 site plan that was approved by the board. The Prince of Peace Education Center used to operate in the education building in the center. They operated there from 1977 to 2013, when, due to the inability to meet financial obligations of running the school, it closed its doors. Then, in 2014, the church rented the education building to the Montessori School, that is the current potential user for the expanded school, and they were allowed to use one classroom licensed for a maximum of 10 children. And, the township permitted that and issued a CO in 2014. The 200-foot radius of the property is pretty simple. It's depicted on your top right corner of your plan. West and north of the property is the Woodland Drive, Rustic Drive residential subdivision. Generally, the lots in that area, some are more than 15,000, but almost all of them, with the exception of a few, are less than 15,000 square feet. East of the property is the R2 zone I previously described. Currently, there's the newer Coral Drive subdivision in that area, and those lots are residential lots in accordance with the R2 zone. Southeast, across Aldrich Road, is the R3 zone. There's a Cindy Court major subdivision that's under constriction. Now, south of Aldrich Road is the R3 zone. Directly across Aldrich Road is the Howell Park and Ride, the Aldrich Road Park and Ride. And then, southwest of the property is the commercial area, the Aldrich Plaza, in which the Bank of America is the immediate closest use.
I got a question real quick.
Sure.
The R2 zone, you said, is part of the Park and Ride?
Yes.
That's just a small section of it, correct?
Yeah, I could see the zoning on our area map is not drawn in accord. Yes, no, it is. Actually, the Howell Park and Ride is the R3 zone.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Am I not correct in evaluating this area compared to what's around it? With the exception of your northeast corner of your property, the balance of your property lines are surrounded by R3?
Yes, or the detention basin servicing the Coral Drive subdivision, yes.
Well, even if you look at the zoning map you handed out, there's a strip of R3 behind you.
Yes, directly behind you.
So, just the, just the, you're right, the Coral Drive, that's R2, but the balance of the area in this section of Howell is R3?
Yes.
This is kind of like a hole in the donut kind of situation?
Yes, it is, yes.
And, R3, the lot sizes are?
15,000 square feet.
Okay.
R2, the lot sizes are 20,000.
20,000 square feet, mhm.
So, what we're proposing, the applicant's proposing, is, it's basically driven by the need for economic vitality of the church. They're proposing a minor subdivision, creating the two lots in the northwesterly corner of the property, fronting on Woodland Drive, and those two lots, there are 502 and 503 on the map, would be 15,000 square feet in size. The remainder of the property would remain, that would be Lot 501, that would be the property of the church. The new lots would have a frontage of 101.49, conforming to the bulk requirements of the R3 zone and the R2 zone, but its area would only be 15,000, whereas 2,000 is required.
20,000.
20,000, sorry. These lots are consistent with the zoning in the vicinity, lots in the vicinity. In the vicinity, immediately adjacent to the property, to the north, there are two lots on Crest Drive that are greater than 15,000, Lots 9 and 6 in Block 59, but Lots 7 and 8 are 13,650 and 10,200 square feet respectively, and those are less than 15,000. Immediately across Woodland Drive, Lot 23 in Block 57 is 12,000 square feet, Lot 25 in Block 57 is 12,000 square feet, and Lot 27 in Block 57,000, 57, is about 10,000 square feet. So, taking that, and then, the remainder of the lots in the Woodland Drive to the north are all R3 sized, or actually smaller than that in many cases. The two proposed lots to be developed would not be by the applicant. They are supposed to be developed by others, by a builder or someone they could sell the lots to. And, they would be developed with single-family dwellings, which, other than the lot areas, will conform to all the other bulk requirements of the R2 zone. As depicted on the conceptual grading plan, each dwelling could have a two-car garage and be served by a two-car driveway that would be 20 feet in width. Those details would be deferred at the time of building permits, when the time plot plans are prepared. Those proposed dwellings would be served by public water and sewer connections or extensions as required. Preliminary Howell Township Municipal Utility Department applications have been submitted. We did not get a review back. I spoke to Mr. Savino, and he said it got lost with some other things, but he would review it diligently. This was only last week that I spoke with him. Details and other outside agency approvals would be conditions of any board approval, and that would be the extension of sanitary sewer and water to this site. We understand that the 15,000 is far undersized from what the town is looking to create and be served by septic. The remainder of Lot, Lot 501, would contain 4.90 acres, and as such, a D3 variance from the conditional use standards is required, which requires a minimum of five acres. I'll address that in a moment. Also proposed is the expansion of the Montessori School. When we were doing this application, we were approached by the church officers of the church, and they stated the intent to want to expand the Montessori School, and since we were coming to the Board of Adjustment for the subdivision, the school variance was added to that. The proposal is to utilize one additional classroom for an additional seven children upon the approval of this board, and be approved for up to four classrooms in the future, all of which can be accommodated in the current building without any physical expansion. So, as such, because it's an expansion of what's deemed a nonconforming use, because schools technically are not conforming to the R2 or R3 zone, we need a D2 variance for the expansion of this pre-existing nonconforming use. So, let me address the variances, if I may. The existing nonconformities are, to which I previously stated. The front setback to the front buildings on the church property, the minimum of which is 43.7 feet to the parish hall, all three structures are less than the 75 feet required. That variance was granted in 1984 by this board, and the side yard setback that exists to the parish hall is 30 feet is required as a conditional use standard for church property, and this is 20.4 feet is provided to the parish hall. Again, this was previously granted in 1984. As far as the D2 variance for the expansion of the Montessori School, I would put forth these special reasons. I reviewed the Howell ordinance for the R2 zone. I believe that schools were eliminated from being permitted conditional uses in the R2 and R3 zones in 2014. So, up until 2014, they actually were permitted. However, the lot area is required to be larger than five acres, so we would have been there for the use if it was a new use. From 1977 to 2013, a school was previously operated by the Prince of Peace Church in the entire building, and from 2014 to present, the current Montessori School has operated in one classroom. The reason we feel this site is particularly suited for the use and the expansion is that the school is already there, to current use. It preexisted when the use was actually eliminated, and it was permitted to go in there upon conditions as late as 2014, and has continued in use since then.
Mike, prior to 2013, Prince of Peace operated the school there. How many classrooms at that time did they have?
I'm not aware, but the president of the congregation can address that. She'll be up next, if you could say that question.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject and add a little bit of history to the application. So, Mike is referencing a 1984 resolution and site plan, and we referenced that in our letter. That was provided to us by the zoning officer. So, 1984, you had two existing structures on a property. What's now the existing one-story parish building along the eastern property line, and what's the existing one-story education building? In 1984, from what the resolution, I can gather from that, the one-story education building was the old parish, sorry, parsonage for the church. The parish hall was the existing church. They got site plan approval to construct the existing one-story building to the west of the property, and I believe they got relief from height variance for a desire to be sticking up. In that resolution in 1984, the applicant had provided testimony that they were going to demolish the existing one-story building, the parsonage that's been used since that time as an education building. So, that kind of throws another wrinkle in there. And there was also another condition, that the existing driveway to the east of the parish hall was to be removed. If, you can't really see from the site plan, but on a site visit, there is an existing driveway to the east of that building. It looks like when the DOT or the township came through and did some improvements along Aldrich Road there, they did install, like, a driveway apron to that existing driveway. Whether or not that was granted any approval from 1984 to current day, you know, I can't say, but at least for 1984, that driveway was to be removed. So, I think the board needs to consider that. I don't know that the Township Traffic Department has taken any issue with the driveway apron, or I don't know if the Township Engineering Department is aware of any concerns or complaints with that, but I think, you know, the board needs to take into consideration, you know, that the existing one-story building was to be removed, that's currently operating the education, and then also that driveway. So, with granting the use variance, they're granting for that building to remain, and then also for that driveway to remain as well.
Okay.
I'll answer those two questions. They're well, well brought up. The parsonage, former parsonage, I don't know how or when it was continued to be used as a school. The president of the congregation may be able to answer that, but the history of the school is what I was provided by the applicant. As far as the drive, I understand that it's seldom used, and as Charlie indicated, the township did recognize its existence by providing a driveway apron. I don't think it was ever physically removed, and I believe most of the people that used the site used the main drive. I don't know of anybody who really uses that that much.
Just, Mike, to clarify that again. So, the township putting in an apron there, that's not to say that they approved that. You know, a lot of times when contractors are doing projects, and they see what appears to be a driveway, they'll install an apron, so that's not to say that that's legally existing. You know, certainly, this board can make it legally existing as far as this application, so I think they should consider that when they're granting all variances and relief.
Mr. Chairman, I never, I never see any issues with that driveway.
What's that?
That, that, that apron in the front there, that's, you know, it's part of the makeup of that site.
I think they're talking the one from the parish hall, correct?
Yeah, east of the parish hall, yes.
The east of the parish hall.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Alongside the...
It's to the east of the parish hall, adjacent to a lot of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, adjacent to tax lot 417.
Yeah, this is the main, which one is it?
Oh, that is it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Paul, that that road is not an issue.
Yeah.
And we should just leave it there. That would be an undue burden, expense to remove that. So, if we just include it in the variance.
Okay. To continue, any expansion of the school, I grant that the board has to recognize the existence and approve the school to have remained, whereas it may have been required to be removed previously. But having said that, the expansion of the school is entirely within that existing building that was formerly the parsonage, and formerly used for education purposes. And, the current parking that's provided on-site is adequate for the school expansion. The school operates on a daily basis. I believe their hours are, I forget what their hours are. The hours are somewhat limited. The hours are 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. They don't overlap with any of the church activities that typically occur weeknights sometimes, or on weekends during service times. So, parking is adequate. We feel that the purposes of zoning are advanced by this application. Subsection A, we feel that the expansion of the school is inherently beneficial. It promotes the general welfare. Subsection G, I believe the school here is an appropriate location for this use. Schools, preschools particularly, are often co-existent on sites such as church facilities or house of worship facilities, and I think that it provides a sufficient, a sufficient location for this. And, also subsection M, which is to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities, with a view of lessening the cost of such development, and to a more efficiently use of land. This is an educational facility. There's more and more discussions and proposals to propose preschool as a public school feature, and as this facility actually relieves that burden from a public school, I think it's a proper cooperation between private and public expenditures of funds. And, I think it would supplement the public program and reduce the burden on the public school system, so that this purpose of zoning is also advanced.
Mike, you say the expansion of the school, okay, is to four classrooms, correct?
Four classrooms.
How many students per class?
I don't believe that's been determined. I think that would have to be determined by the Department of Licensing. The current proposal is to expand it with one classroom right now, with an additional, what did I say, seven additional children. So, they have up to 17 now. The maximum I can get with four classrooms is yet to be determined.
Okay, so...
It's what can legally function.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that affect the parking, not knowing?
In my opinion, not really, because all the parking is provided in the rear. Access is the rear of that building, and the parking, there's 81 spaces on the site, which is more than sufficient for the school unto itself.
But, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. The reason that you're seeking a D2 variance for the school is not because you're physically expanding the school, it's because you're removing area from the lot on which the school is located?
No. It's really because we're expanding this, what's currently permitted to be the school. Township limited their approval to the Montessori School to one classroom and 10, up to 10 children.
Okay.
So, because we're expanding the number of classrooms and the number of children.
I get it, okay.
So, having said that, we don't think there's any detriment to the public good or the vicinity by the expansion of the school, other than the physical expansion inside the school. It's relatively invisible, and I don't believe it impairs the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance. Up to four years ago, five years ago, schools were permitted, and it's a typical ancillary use that occurs on house of worship facilities. As far as the D3 variance for the proposed area of new Lot 501, that is a conditional use variance. 4.9 acres are provided, five acres is required. I would point out that the deviation is partially due to the 1988 taking by DOT, which took away .22 acres. Obviously, that .22 acres would throw it over the five acres that's required to meet the conditional use standard. I would note that, back in the day, I'm not sure when it was actually deleted from the Howell ordinances, Howell ordinance is formally allowed for a deviation of lot area when the deviation was caused by a taking or dedication of land for municipal purposes. In this case, the dedication of land was for a state purpose by improving the traffic flow from Aldrich Road onto Route 9 North, and the taking was for that ramp that did that. Obviously, the test case for D3 variance is Coventry Square versus Westwood Zoning Board. The required proof is that the applicant must show that the site will accommodate the problems. problems, quote, associated with the use, even though the proposal does not comply with the conditions. In this case, that's the minimum lot area. We must show that it will not detriment the property without substantial detriment to the public good. I think we've shown that, that the area of the lot is still suitable for the use as a church and a house of worship facility, even with the reduction of the lot area by the two proposed lots. We also have to show we will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The church facility exists. The current education facility in the one-story education building exists. I don't believe that the expansion of that use will impair the zoning, zone plan or zone ordinance. And the other proof is that the variance should be reviewed similar to the proofs required for a C variance. In this case, the advancement of the purpose of zoning and the benefits of the application outweigh any detriment to the public good. Again, this deviation is partially due to the 88 taking by New Jersey Department of Transportation, the loss of .22 acres. The lot would have otherwise been 5.12 acres. The site can continue to function as it currently does, even with the lots that are being created. So therefore, you can conclude that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the use. I'll address the buffers, issues that are brought up by your professionals in a moment. The benefits of the application would outweigh any detriment to the public good. And lastly, the deviation can be seen as a de minimis exception, really, where five acres is required and 4.9 acres is provided, 4.5, strike that. Five acres is required and 4.9 acres is provided. Feel that's only a .1 acre deficiency, and that's not that major. So having said that, I feel that we've advanced the positive and the negative criteria by the fact that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, and there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As for the lot areas for both new lots, 501 and 502, those lots are required to be 20,000 square feet, and 15,000 square feet is provided. As I pointed out, this property was zoned R3 prior to 1997, and I, as I opined before, when the drafters of the zoning map drew the R2 zone, it could have just as easily included that property in the R3 zone with which it's more consistent. The proposed lots can really see, be seen as infill, which is in accordance with the Woodlands Drive and Rustic Drive and Crest Drive neighborhood. The R2 and R3 zoning districts have a purpose that is to permit infill development at moderate densities in the established centers identified in the Hallow master plan. We feel that the creation of these two lots does that. We also feel that this creation of these two lots at their area and their ultimate residential development with new single-family dwellings would be consistent with the development pattern of Woodland Drive, Rustic Drive, and Crest Drive neighborhood. And we're directly abutting those neighborhoods. Actually, the R2 lots in this area would be not fitting as much with the character of the neighborhood. I previously noted the lot sizes in the area. Otherwise, the proposed development of the lots would meet all the zoning requirements of the R2, other than the lot area variances requested. And I feel that the two 15,000 square foot lots pose less of an impact to the existing house of worship site despite the buffer issue, which will be addressed. The creation of the two 20,000 square foot lots in accordance with the R2 zone would impact the church more and start impacting on the church's infrastructure, particularly the parking and the open areas east of the proposed lots. As to the C2 criteria, criteria, this variance request relates to a specific piece of property that was zoned R3 prior to 1997, but has since been included in R2. This property could have just as easily been included in R2 when the ordinance was revised. The purposes of the act that are advanced by the requested variance is that I believe the appropriate promotion of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and communities. The creation of these two lots and their ultimate residential developments would fit in with the pattern on Woodland Drive and Crest Drive immediately adjacent to the lots. And there would be adequate provisions for light air and open space, as all yard setbacks for those lots will be respected. And I believe the benefits of the application would outweigh any detriment to the public good. So, variance is going to be granted without substantial detriment due to the consistency with the neighborhood, and the approval of the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The building would meet all the required setbacks and limitations on height and coverage, and will meet all the construction standards for Hallow Township. As to the buffers and screening, that variance is specifically required from section 188-92F, which is a conditional use standard. States, no off-street parking shall be located in the required setback from the street line. Off-street parking shall be screened in accordance with the provisions of this chapter and shall be appropriately screened and buffer from a joint, from a joint to nearby residences. The applicant has no problem with establishing a buffer 50 feet where it can do along these lots. In the area very southeast corner of proposed lot 5.03, there is the parking lot that's very close to that lot line. In that area, the existing parking is in there. The proposed remedy, there's two that are cited in your ordinance for buffers. One is the distance from a use to the proposed use. In this case, the proposed commercial use is the education building that's greater than 200 feet from that corner, and the proposal would be to fence the open space of that lot with a solid fence that would provide a screen. That solid fence could be six foot high, and we would ask that that be allowed to be deferred to the time that the lots are developed for residential purposes, so that that can be put on the developer of the lots rather than the church as a burden.
Mr. Chair, I would strongly object to that, because I have seen a lot of subdivisions come in where we defer the fence to plot plan for the individual owners. These lots are, for all intents and purposes, are going to be developed independently, and that this application is here seeking relief from the buffer, they should be obligated to put in the fence.
We'll put in the fence. As far as requested waiver relief...
Mike, before we go on to the waivers, can we just talk about some of this relief that you talked about already? So number one, the buffer, while yes, is part of the conditional use, you also need relief from section 63, which is a variance for the buffer required between non-residential and residential development.
Yeah, I've offered that other than the area where the parking lot is encroaching into the buffer, we're seeking that variance, obviously, and along the remainder of the lots that are common with the residential zone, it's offered that a 50-foot buffer would be designated.
So while we're talking about that back portion, what is that back portion of the lot used for?
I believe, I think the President of the church can better explain that, but it's probably when they have like, open fairs, outside activities that are associated with the church on Sunday, things like that.
Because my concern is, is that the creation of undersized lots for residential development is not good planning, under any circumstances. And that there is an opportunity to have two conforming lots here by eliminating one of the residential lots. You can have a 20,000 square foot lot in that back corner, which would then make the church lot five acres, which is required, and provide adequate area to provide a buffer. So to me, the introduction of that additional undersized lot, which, under any circumstances, in my opinion, is not good planning, creates the issues associated with additional relief required for the application. It then reduces the church lot to less than five acres, and I get it, it's close, but it's still undersized. It eliminates the ability to put a buffer in that corner around their existing parking lot, and you're creating two residential lots in town that are not conforming with the zoning. And while I understand the position is that this lot could have easily been put in R3, it was not put in R3. It has been zoned this way, and again, I would reiterate, the planning board has evaluated the master plan every single year for the past five years at least, and not one single time has anything come forward. And quite honestly, while the planning board is looking at these things, requests have come in from property owners all over town, look at my property, look at this property, nothing has happened here. So unfortunately, it's R2. It's not R3, which requires 20,000 square foot lots. So, while I understand the testimony in the presentation, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with creation of undersized lots for residential purposes in town. I think that there has been a concerted effort in town to reduce residential development, and certainly not encourage residential development on lots that don't conform with the zoning. And eliminating one lot would enable area for 20,000 square feet, area for the buffer, and give area back to the mother lot, which would make that conforming. So you would eliminate multiple variances by eliminating a residential lot. You would eliminate one, two, three, at least four variances by eliminating one residential lot.
With all the respect to that, the creation of one lot with the required obtaining of an LOI, the required extension of the public sanitary sewer to just one lot would basically kill the project for the church. I mean, it just wouldn't be economically feasible. The whole reason they're doing this is to maintain their utility as a church.
I, I get it, but the financial feasibility of this is not a land use reason.
Yes, but we also provide, prevented proofs and history...
I, I heard the testimony, Mike. I don't agree with it. I'm sorry.
You don't have to agree with it.
Well, they're going to ask me if I agree, so I'm here to say that I don't agree with the creation of undersized lots for residential development, period. And that has been a policy position of this town for many years, to not encourage the development of undersized lots.
You know, Jen, I'm going to take exception here.
Okay.
You know, I've watched us over the years do clustering development, right?
I understand that.
Come on now, let's, let's talk about this, right? We're, you know, we're hearing certain testimony here that says this, they got robbed when we put in the, you know, the, the route and I run out. They're looking for financial relief here. You are in an R3 zoned area where you've got a lot of conforming lots that are there or not there, as we talk about the 13,000 and the 10,000 square foot.
Those are not in the same zone. I understand what you're saying, that they're not in the same zone.
You know, and, and, you know, Charlie, when we look at Rustic Drive, you know, you've got the sanitary line, right? What the applicant is saying here is if they run the sanitary line further up for two lots, does that also benefit the other three lots across on Woodland, on Woodland Drive?
You know, potentially, could at some point in the future, the lots across the street hook into that sanitary? Yes, but the applicant would be required just to provide for those two lots. So in order to create two conforming lots, they have to provide it, regardless of any other future extensions of, you know, adjacent homeowners. You know, this applicant is required to provide that in order to grant relief for the, the creation of these two lots. Otherwise, it's, like I said, it's that other hole, they need 40,000 square feet with the septic system, and, you know, I'm not even going to get into separation distances with septic systems and wells and dry wells that's required by Board of Health. Once you're getting to those really small lot areas, it gets very difficult to start fitting those onto lots. Again, that's subject to Monmouth County Board of Health, but regardless of any future stuff with other residences, this applicant, in order to grant these two lots, would require septic, you know, extension to provide for those two lots, sanitary, sorry, sanitary main extension for those two lots.
At the end of the day, the decision is yours. You guys can decide to do what you want.
Jen, the tone and the demeanor that you're presenting is upsetting to me.
I, I understand that, but at the end of the day...
It's upsetting to me, Jen. I'm telling you...
I, I understand that, but respectfully, I'm not doing my job if I don't bring this information to your attention. You guys can decide what you want to do with it, but I will tell you that from, from a planning perspective, creation of undersized lots is not encouraged under any circumstances. And I understand that the properties across the street are smaller, but they are not in the same zone. Now, this applicant could have requested a rezoning of this property to be included in the R2, that did not happen. So all I have to say is you guys can decide what you want to do, but they're requesting a tremendous amount of relief that are, that is precipitated by one lot, undersized. If that lot were to be eliminated, four variances go away. And quite honestly, you know, really, you should zone by ordinance, not by variance. That's the goal. And so, you know, my job is to tell you that, you know, and there is an opportunity to make these two lots conforming, you already need relief for the lot for the church. You need relief because that lot is undersized. So to make these two lots conforming, you're talking 10,000 square feet, which is .3 acres. So, or .25 acres, which I think the testimony with respect to the adequacy of the lot for the church would remain the same, whether it was 4.9 or 4.7. So, creating non-conforming residential lots is discouraged, and that's where I'm coming from with respect to this. If you guys don't agree, that's up to you. You're the ones that make the decision. I, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it up.
What about making them two 20,000 square foot lots?
Well, that's what I said. You could take area in the back of this property to make those lots conform. They don't have to be perfect rectangles. They could, especially lot 5.3 could be a, a little modified in the shape so as not to impact on the parking lot, but there is area there, and I would prefer to see conforming residential lots. You're already being asked to grant relief for the lot with the church already. So to me, that would at least eliminate two variances.
Do you, do you have an issue with that?
Well, we could certainly do that. We'll just need that expanded relief on the size of the remainder church lot, but we certainly can make that revision, yes.
I would venture to guess that your testimony with respect to the 4.7 versus 4.9 acres would be the same, correct?
Yes, with the only exception being that the taking by DOT wouldn't throw us over the top, but...
Correct.
Yes.
Close, it would make you have 4.1.
Close, yes.
Well, I have a question, though. If you're going to extend the lots to 20,000 square feet, does that still have an effect on the wetlands with the LOI?
Well, they're certainly going to have to provide that information no matter what.
Yes.
That has nothing to do with extending it? Just wanted to be clear with that.
The only, the only thing is the buffer. You're, you're going to have to extend your buffer, that's it, on the one lot.
Whatever it is, we'd have to take a look at that and show it on the plan, yes.
Take 10,000 square feet newer from the back lot there. I, you know, that sounds like a good suggestion. However, I would like to hear from perhaps the President of the church or whatever, and hear what impact that would have.
She's here. We can have her testify.
Let's finish up with Mike.
Finish, Mr. Geller. Then we'll bring her up.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note one additional constraint that the lot has. So we noted in our letter, we did a deed search of the property, and there was an easement filed on the subject lot in 1998 by Bell Atlantic for a utility vault. It's along the western portion of the lot, adjacent to Woodland Drive. It doesn't appear from the deed that was provided that it's in conflict with any of those new lots, but however, this is a subdivision, you know, that should be shown on the subdivision map, you know, prior to anything being finalized.
Yeah, we will show that, that deed was provided to me by Mr. Conliffe's office, and it's a very small area in the south westerly corner. In fact, they'd never even built the vault, so, but the easement is still there, yes. We will show that. Not an issue. I'll address the waivers and the reports after the congregation president comes up and hears some testimony. You good with that, Alan?
But it doesn't matter. But it makes it conforming.
If you're going to fence it, the fence is not going to be, it's going to be irregular fence when they fence in the lot.
They'll have to figure out...
I'd actually be able to make it shorter and wider and then avoid that.
Yeah. That's going to be... That's gonna be up to... Well, it has to be finalized by us. This won't be a final. Charlie, there, there's been a couple of discussions with the board members.
Okay.
The, I think it's Lot, oh, that's not my magnifying glass.
It's 03, Mr. Chairman.
Five, 503. If you kinda shrunk that and come downwards towards Aldridge Road to do that, that, that kinda make, keeps it kinda conformed instead of oblong.
Yeah.
Unless that runs into the vault, Charlie.
Uh, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you right now without having the actual... The easement is filed with a map showing the location of it. Uh, you know, prior to anything, any modifications, I would recommend that the applicant put that on their subdivision map so they're aware of it.
No, that, that's not what I'm talking about.
No, no, I think what Mr. Say is asking is if they do extend that Lot 5.03 to the south...
Yes.
There are potential issue with that extending into the vault. I don't think so, but I, we need to see it on the plan. My question would be is, and I can't recall off the top of my head what the lot depth requirement is for the R3, so if you were to shrink that down, are you then creating a lot depth variance to be able to fit it in there? You have 150 feet right now. Uh, you know, I'm gonna venture a guess that those lots are sized to be conforming with the lot depth and lot frontage, so...
Well, would, wouldn't it be, isn't it an average of 153 or 150 foot? It's not, each line has to be 150, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could create like an oblong lot, you know...
An average.
Yeah, you could. I mean, I think what also Jen was suggesting too is you could extend to the east, you know, and not necessarily go perpendicular, but do a jut out to get your additional 5,000 square feet to create a conforming lot there. That way, you wouldn't have to do any reconfiguration of the parking area, of the light poles back there. You still need buffer relief, but, you know, we're talking about some fencing and maybe some planting.
You need that anyway.
Exactly.
Okay, Mr. Kaplan.
Yes, we'll call the church president and then Mr. Scott, or ask him.
She's been previously sworn.
Hi, how are you?
Could you tell the board you are the president of the church, correct?
I am the president.
Okay. And you're familiar with what the church uses the outside lands for other than the parking areas, this open area?
Yes.
Okay, tell us what about that.
Outside area behind the two lots is used very, very rarely. We used to play baseball out there, but they don't do that anymore. And we have a car show that sometimes we would have to park cars back there. And also, we have a church picnic annually that the kids will run out there and play. And we have an Easter at kind that would be out there as well.
And when you say out there, how far past the parking area do they go out? All the way to the neighbors?
Oh, gosh, no, because this is all woods.
There's a wood line.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking about before you get to the wood line?
Yeah, and they don't really go past, I'd say, 30, 40 feet.
So when you're looking at these maps, and if you were looking at the proposed lot line between 502 and 503, you see that line on 502? If you were to extend that easterly, would they, would these activities go beyond that?
No.
In a northerly direction?
No, because the activities don't even go this way. It's, it's all directed this way, like to the east, northeast.
But not that far deep?
No, because there's more woods over here.
So they go a little bit past this parking area here and a little bit around this chain leaning fence area?
Yeah, no, no, because the woods actually come right here. Like, they kind of are parallel to the playground. This, it's just this very small area in front of the parking lot.
When you say in front, you're pointing to north, the northerly line of the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And, and how often does those things, these activities occur?
About three times a year.
And let's turn our attention to the existing education building. That used to be the parsonage?
Yes, it did.
Okay. And this structure, what kind of building is this?
It's a house.
It's an old house?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the proposal for the classrooms and expanding, they would stay within the confines of that house? Is that correct?
Yes, mm-hmm.
You're not asking to add on to that house?
Not at all.
So, and the number of children in each classroom is dependent upon the square footage of the classroom?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So different classrooms would have a different amount of kids per, per student?
Exactly.
So right now, you have one classroom and one group of students, which has, how many students?
Six.
Six. And, and is that the maximum that's allowed?
No, there's 10 allowed.
There's allowed 10 by square footage?
According to the square footage.
Yeah, and is that one of the larger rooms in that house?
Yes, not the largest, though.
Not the largest? But there, so is, how many rooms are larger, one?
Well, we have one room that's in, I don't know, right here. That is a youth group room, but it's not included in this request. That's larger. The other ones, we have two very, two small, and then one a little bit smaller than the one currently being used.
So you're talking about approximately three more rooms that could be used for classrooms
Yes.
at this time, and maybe the youth room in the future?
Never.
No, no plans for the... So it's just, so it's four more classrooms, four classrooms, three, three plus the one that's already there?
Yes.
And the one that's already there is the largest of the classrooms?
Yes.
And that's allows 10, so these would be allowed less?
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When Prince of Peace operated from '77 to '13, how many students did they have, you know?
Oh, well over, I would say 60 to 75.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I take it the nursery, rental of the nursery is important for the church, keep it, for its upkeep of the church?
Yes, it is, but it's also imperative for our community outreach.
It helps with everybody, non-members of the church too?
Yes, mm-hmm.
The community in general. I don't have any other questions for, perhaps, the board?
Questions from the board?
Yes.
You said it was, it was a house or it is a house?
It was a house.
So a kitchen, bathroom, are they still...
Now, the kitchen, we really only use the sink and the refrigerator. The stove has been completely disconnected.
And this house is one floor or two floors?
It's one floor with a basement.
And the basement is used for schools also?
It's actually used for storage for our charter Boy Scout group, troop, I should say.
Okay. And so then these classrooms were a form of bedrooms? Is that how, how it is?
Not ever since I've been there. It's, it's always been our Sunday school classrooms that we've shared with the schools.
Okay, thank you.
That's what Reverend Pierce was...
Yes.
Just on, if we're moving the lot line east on these two proposed lots, just, you know, just so I'm doing the math, how many feet are we extending it easterly?
It, it's gonna vary.
Approximately.
Probably about 50 feet.
About 50 feet.
Is that gonna impact what you're doing in the back there?
If you move these lines, this lot this way, 50 feet, will that make any, will that impact you other than the parking lot?
I am the president of a board that I would have to go and get this approved through our board. I, I can't make that decision by myself.
No, but would that impact any activities that you have with 50 feet moving?
I don't think so, but I can't answer 100%.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just touch back on one of the comments you made. I did pull open the zoning schedule for the R2 zone here. Uh, there is no lot depth requirement. There's just a lot frontage requirement of 100 feet and a minimum lot area. So, you know, if the applicant and the board would like to see Lot 5.03, the depth shrunk a little bit, and then the width increased or the lot frontage increased to try to get to 20,000 square feet, that would be feasible.
Okay.
You know, contingent on it not infringing on that Bell Atlantic easement, and then obviously, like as Mr. Cyclomente asked, with the LOI, you know, still being required.
I have a question regarding the parking lot. In the northwest corner, is this basically, do you have stripes for the parking spots?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering with this Lot 5.03, bringing it down, that's gonna start impeding on to your parking lot?
You gotta avoid that light pole that's there as well, right?
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, I'll call our next witness. What's her name again?
Maria.
Maria, Ms. Scott. Okay, there you go.
Hello.
Hi, just tell the board your name again.
My name is Maria Carrasco. I'm the director of the Haven Montessori School.
And could you tell us about the school, how many students you have there now?
Right now, I have seven children.
And you're allowed children per room based upon the size of the room, correct?
Yes.
Do you know, based upon the rooms in this house that are there now, what type of, how many children you'd be allowed to have for these different rooms?
The room that I have now is 10 children. The room that I'm thinking, if you allow me, will be seven children. And then the future will be unknown. Because I'll need to find out what is there.
The other two rooms, are they bigger or smaller than those two?
Smaller.
So they won't be more than seven?
No.
They probably, potentially less.
Less.
But they won't, based upon the square footage, and that's, you have to get that from the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
What department is that from? Do you remember? Community Affairs? Education?
Education.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Any question?
What will be the maximum amount of students you're looking for based on what the state allows? Is that the correct number?
Yes.
And, but we don't know what that number is?
No, not right now.
Okay, thanks.
I just have one question regarding this plot, you know, the inside. Uh, is there just one bathroom or do you have two?
It will be one, there is one bathroom.
Okay. Okay, so you think that would still be sufficient, having just one?
Yes.
Okay.
In my experience, yes.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think if you wanna see what, how the lines can be changed.
But Ron, I, and now Jen, you're gonna, gonna have... I just was thinking about, can we take just maybe a straw poll and see where we are? That way they could move forward?
I really disfavor straw polls.
I know.
So I would look at it this way, if the applicant's finished, just, I think it comes down to whether or not the board will agree to many of the things that Jen has brought out tonight and that Charlie's brought out tonight as conditions of approval, or whether or not you want the applicant to come back with a revised drawing. I thought I heard the testimony, and I could be wrong, that something about if the lot lines were to be moved, that board, that the board of the church would need to review this before this board moved the lot lines? Was that what I heard?
Yes.
So, you know, my suggestion would be, I think at this point in time, that they have to go back to their principles and discuss, you know, what the board is looking favorably upon, if I'm catching that. If the board agrees with Jen, rather than make it a condition of approval, I think that it would be, be better to see if that's what they want.
Right.
You know, we're really not here to redesign the site for them.
I know.
But, you know, there's been a lot of give and take, and it becomes part of a draftsman situation for me as well. I mean, like, I'm being, I would be asked to do a resolution of approval and I have a subdivision map in front of me. But, you know, that's pretty much, Alan, where I'm coming from. I mean, there's a lot that can be done as a condition of approval, but the testimony that I heard tonight indicates that perhaps there need to be a little bit of regrouping on the applicant's end.
Can we, think we oughta go ahead and open to public and, you know, get that out of the way?
Mr. Chairman, could I just touch on two quick things before we go into the public? So, you know, it's not showing on the site plan, but if you go out to the site, there are a number of signs for all the uses there. You have at least one sign for the actual church itself. For the Montessori School, you have like a two-face freestanding sign out front. It looks like it's just, you know, a plywood construction sign. You have another sign on the banister for the Montessori School. And then obviously, the parish hall has some signage for the parish hall on there. So, you know, the board should consider that, whether or not they want to grant a variance for all those signs, whether or not the two signs for the Montessori School can be consolidated into one, whether it's building mounted or whether it's just one signage, you know, double-sided in front of the school there. You know, I think the board should discuss that. And then as far as the parking, I just wanna get it on the record too, and I think it would be helpful for the applicant to at least maybe show the existing parking configuration with account. Uh, we did for a review of the areas that there's about 80 parking spaces. If you take all the uses as a whole, you know, and try to find applicable uses from the, the schedule and the, and the ordinance, we calculate about 100. Now, that's based on all the operations occurring at the same time. Uh, you know, I think the applicant has provided testimony, I'm not refuting anything, that the educational use does not occur when the house of worship is doing. And then, you know, 99 times out of 100, the house of worship is not gonna be having events that the parish hall is having events. So I think based on the uses and the hours, you're not gonna have an issue with parking. I think it would just be beneficial for them to show that on the plan, um, just, you know, for, for record purposes more than anything.
Okay. Mike, you have a problem with that?
No.
Jen?
I, I mean, I, absent the need for the boards, the church board to approve a change in the lot configuration, I would've been fine doing it as a condition.
I think we need to hear from the board, church board.
Yeah, no, I know, but I, you wanna open to public and get that out of the way? Mr. Kaplan?
Yes, please.
Can I have a motion to open to public?
Motion open to the public.
A motion by Mr. O'Donnell. If I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Massa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the public wishing to come forward, ask question, or make a comment? Please come forward.
Lee Fankhauser. Lee Fankhauser. I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns with regard to this plan. The initial concern that I have is that we're bringing up and trying to get through two lots that are considerably undersized for this piece of property. The only thing that I've heard that is the reason for that is monetary, that the owner can...
I, I'm gonna cut you off right now. If, if you heard what was stated on the record, they're gonna bring those lots to conforming size.
They're gonna consider that, they're gonna...
They, well, they, they're not gonna consider it. They, they have to go to the board to see, but, you know, our planner has clearly stated she doesn't want the, the undersized lot.
Excellent.
So we're trying to get it to a conforming lot?
Okay.
That, that's what the testimony is.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And the second thing that I wanna just ask is I don't understand how this could be approved as a, as even a preliminary without knowing where the boundaries, the boundaries of this property are gonna be.
That, that's what we're discussing, that's what we just discussed.
Okay. Uh, that was a concern. Uh, then second, the second point that I wanted to bring, it's really a question, with regard to the school that's being discussed here. And I wanted to know if the school that's proposed to continue here is in conformance with the master plan of the town for a school. Uh, I, I don't know if there are certain acreage requirements for a school to be on operation. I, I thought there were. And, and that there are other requirements for a school that this property may not comply with. I don't know if this is a daycare or if it's a school. Uh, but if it's a school, then I think that there are certain requirements that this has to meet. Um, and, and I don't know that it would. So, so those are the, those are my concerns.
Mr. Geller?
What the town requires for schools, I don't have that immediately at my fingertips, but most of those are public schools, elementary and high school.
Agreed.
Jen, can I ask you, are there standards for preschools?
No. So, and I would consider this school to be accessory to the church, and that the conditional use standards for houses of worship take into consideration that it's very common for houses of worship to maintain this type of educational component.
Right, but I, I did hear Mr. Geller, though. If, if I misheard you, I apologize. But I thought that we were talking about this school potentially growing to the point that it would supplement and perhaps take on students from Howell Township and be brought into the school system itself. Is that something that you-
I think you misheard that, Mr. Fankhauser. This school is intended to provide preschool education, if and when, and, and through kindergarten as well. So, any of the children that go here, we're only offering that that takes away the burden of having to educate them publicly because they're being done privately.
Right.
That was my only offer.
Okay, I, I understand. I appreciate that. And then my last, my last statement is, is with regard to the undersized lots. Jen, I appreciate you being as adamant as you have been. And to the, and to Mr. Seiya, with regard to your objection on Jen. I, you know, you were talking about clustering, this is not even, this is not close to a cluster, not giving anything back.
I'm not saying this is clustering. I'm just saying, I'm pulling the BS flag-
Right.
-on what we've done in this town for many years. And here, we got the Prince of Peace, you know, a religious organization that's coming forward and asking for a little relief. That's, Lee.
I understand.
Come on, Lee.
I, I, I just, I just don't, I agree with the statement that was made, that you should be planning for per ordinance and not for variance.
Let's keep the questions to the applicant. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Merton, second. Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Mr. Troply?
I presume at this point in time that Mr. Kaplan will have to regroup with your applicants?
Yes.
And present, hopefully, a final version of a more conforming subdivision. And of course, you'll need time for that. And would you give us an indication as to when your applicant could meet, and when Mr. Geller could possibly return with?
I would suggest, can you hear me okay? I would suggest that same night we're gonna be coming back on Kowalski, was it April twenty-second?
The twenty-second.
April twenty-second?
April twenty-second.
Yeah, we'll come back, we'll be here at the same time.
Without further public notice.
Yes. Okay, I gotta find my agenda here. Got it. Okay. Case number BA eighteen thirty-three, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, will be carried to April twenty-second, seven-thirty, with no further notice.
Mr. Kaplan, if I could just request that prior to that April date, if you can have something from your environmental person, not an LOI or anything, but any kind of like field, like a memo from their field investigation-
Okay.
-talking about the wetlands or non-wetlands on the property, that would be great.
I'll have the engineer do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much, if you'd-
You're welcome.
I want to take a quick five-minute break, go to the restroom, and I do want to get this other case started. We're not gonna get through it quick, I do want to get it started. If you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
You don't mind?
Chugging this out here and cutting this on your day.
The zoning board has reconvened.
Okay, next case, case number BA eighteen twenty-seven, Euro Supply LTD DBA Stone Quest- Stone Quest or Stone Quest?
Stone.
Stone Quest LLC. Use variance preliminary, final site plan for ancillary bulk variance. Application of Euro Supply LTD DBA Stone Quest LLC is applicant in two-seventy-one Adelphia LLC as owner, seeking a use variance preliminary and final major site plan approval with the ancillary bulk variance to construct the concrete block manufacturing plant, associated storage bin, gravel storage areas, pole borne two storage buildings, circulation drive, stormwater management, ancillary improvement on premises known as Block one fifty-seven, lots one, two, three, four, five, two-seventy-one Adelphia Farmingdale Road. This application was originally scheduled January fourteenth, when it was rescheduled to February twenty-fifth, and on February twenty-fifth was carried to March eleventh, no further notice. Expiration date, April thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Alfieri?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. As the chairman just stated, we're here seeking use variance preliminary and final major site plan with some bulk variances on the site. It's currently, the site is located at two-seventy-one Adelphia Farmingdale Road. It's currently improved with a sixty thousand square foot commercial building, as well as a residential home. Stone Quest, the applicant, is, operates a stone manufacturing business out of the commercial building, and seeks to expand that current use for the purposes of creating stone concrete blocks. We have a short video that we would like to show the board, which I believe Charlie has, which is going to show the proposed use that we're, we're seeking tonight. It's gonna show the manufacturing that's gonna take place. Yeah, you could, it's just introductory.
I don't know if we're gonna have sound, but-
You don't need sound.
Charlie, you could lip sync.
Yeah, sing for you.
You don't want to hear the thing.
Lip sync. But not, not like the old Kung-Fu movies either.
Yeah.
A little lag on it?
Yeah.
The sound would help.
So what are we looking at?
This concrete band.
Mr. Geller, I know he previously got sworn in, he can provide some clarification, that's what you're looking at.
Is this thing now?
No, this is, this is, this is pulled off of YouTube. So this is what the proposal is going to entail, it's just not the exact site.
All the equipment you currently see would be situated inside the existing building on the site. The only exception are the two silos you saw and the hoppers that are outside, I'll go into that in more detail. The materials from outside are taken into the block-making machine, and they're worked on like that, as you say. That smoothes up the tops there, and they dry it.
Oh, Mike, is this just strictly cinder blocks, or are they-
No, this is just illustrating what the machines are, are going to do. I actually have two individual blocks here that are going, that's what these, the machines are gonna be utilized for, or something similar to it.
They're actually concrete blocks and bricks, and they could be finished with finished sides as well.
Are you gonna do the way like the regular masonry block go?
You mean concrete block?
Yeah.
They're gonna be the kind of block that could have finished faces, so they're used for finishing more than structural purposes.
So I believe the board got a good, pretty good sense of what the, what the actual machinery does. Now, the site itself is currently being utilized by Stone Quest for stone manufacturing, and a large portion of the existing building is gonna be utilized for this use. And then there's the addition that we'll get into, that'll have the silos. So first I want to bring Mr. Geller up. I know he's already kind of provided some testimony, so.
Yeah, let's go ahead and swear you out, Mr. Geller.
I do. Michael Geller, professional engineer, professional planner.
Do you need his qualifications?
Yeah, real quick. Real quick.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
I'm a professional engineer, professional planner. I practice as an engineer since nineteen eighty, and as a planner since nineteen eighty-three. I've testified before this board and many boards in the capacity of engineer and planner throughout the state.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Mr. Geller, can you please orient the board to the site, the current improvements, and then what we are proposing?
Yes, I would like to pass out, have a more, a render-
Well, Mark being announced in exhibit A seventeen, and Mr. Geller, are you handing out a reduced copy of something, or is this a new exhibit?
Same thing as this exhibit.
A seventeen. And want to place a description on the record when you have an opportunity?
A seventeen, this is a color rendering of the site in question. It also depicts the site immediately to the east that is currently under construction, and I'll describe that later. It's dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
A seventeen.
Yes.
And Ron, we also have a booklet that we'd like to enter, and it's A eighteen.
A eighteen, yes.
I figured you'll have a couple things on at once.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, eight eighteen is a Stone Quest booklet. It shows what the current operation manufactures.
This is A nineteen, that's for color photo.
A nineteen.
And then A nineteen, we have colored photos of the current site.
One color photo.
One color photo.
That's taken from Squankham Yellowbrook Road, as requested by the board engineer.
That was from Yellowbrook Road?
Yes, Squankham Yellowbrook Road.
A seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, or more, do you have anything else, Dante?
Not right now. Unless you want these bricks.
Yeah, your sign does break.
So, Mr. Geller, do you please orient the board to the site?
Yes. This property is Block one fifty-seven, in fact, lots one, two, three, four, and five. It's also known as two-seventy-one Adelphia Road. It's situated, it's a uniquely shaped lot. It's situated at the corner of Adelphia Road and Squankham Yellowbrook Road. That would be the southeast corner. It has much road frontage, approximately a thousand and forty-six feet on Adelphia Road, and about one thousand five hundred and fifty-seven feet on Squankham Road. It has one sideline that is coincidental with the Joseph Fazio Steel site that was approved by the planning board around two thousand fifteen, and is currently under construction. This property has, and both of those roads, by the way, are county roads, five-twenty-four, five-twenty-four A. Property has an area of about seventeen and a half acres to the current right-of-way lines of the two roadways. There is a proposed dedication to forty feet from center line along Adelphia Road, where it doesn't currently exist. That would be in accordance with the county master plan, and that seven-foot dedication would result in the property being seventeen point thirty-two acres. This property is in the SED one, Special Economic Development Zone, which was created as an overlay in two thousand thirteen by the township. It overlays the underlying ARE two zone. It's subject to the bulk requirements of the ARE two zone, but allows the uses that are allowed in the SED one zone. This was previously owned by the Harwood Company, who owned this for many years, up until the sale to the applicant. The site has historically been used for a variety of industrial and manufacturing uses, years before the SED one overlay zone was created. And the single-family residential structure that exists in Adelphia roadside of the existing building has been in existence since the early two thousands, uh, excuse me, strike that, was in existence at the time that the factory was there. So I'm not even sure when that was built. After several attempts by the Harwoods in the early two thousands, the property was eventually zoned SED one in two thousand thirteen. The site was purchased from the Harwoods in two thousand fifteen, and has been utilized by Stone Quest, which is a stone product manufacturing business. They manufacture quartz and marble countertops, furniture, all different kinds of things out of stone and marble, limestone, that is a permitted use in the zone. The existing site development includes a sixty thousand five hundred and seventy-six square foot commercial building situated in the approximate center of the property. There's also the single-family residence I just described. There's a paved access-
Mike, can we, can we address that single-family resident real quick? Are y'all, are y'all gonna abandon that resident?
No, it's intended to be used only for employees of the applicant.
Well, you know, it's gotta meet all the buffers, correct?
Yeah.
Fifty-foot buffers?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna address that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Seiya, did you find the residence on the plan?
It's a little house right there.
It's a little house in front of it.
I got it.
Thank you. There's a paved access drive, two-way, it's separated by an island that accesses the property from Adelphia Road to a parking area, and to the various uses of the site north and west of the building. Those uses are in conjunction with the current stone business. It's noted that many of the variances and desired waivers that are cited in the board professionals' reports are attributed to existing site conditions before we even got here with this site plan application. Mostly in the areas that are revoked from the proposed use. In other words, the proposed use is south and east of the building, whereas mostly non-conformities have to do with the parking, the residence, and the areas north and west of the building.
Are there any wetlands on site?
There are no verified wetlands on the property or within a hundred and fifty feet, as per the New Jersey GeoWeb service. The same waiver for that was applied when Fazio obtained his approval. The site is upland of any wetlands or critical areas. The site is a commercial building, is served by a septic system and public water service. The single-family residence is served by public sewer and public water. There's a sewer easement that crosses the property that was installed to serve the Girl Scout site. And it crosses the north-westerly corner of the property, and then exits to the Manasquan Interceptor that flows along Yellowbrook. So the house is on sewer, but the commercial building is not. In fact, according to the municipal utility department review, the factory is not in a sewer service area. There is one existing site identification sign at the main entrance off Adelphia Road, approximately four by four feet, equals sixteen square foot in area, and that's set back twenty feet from the existing right-of-way line. The owner obtained approval for that a few years ago from the township. This property generally slopes from the northeast to the southwest towards Squankham Yellowbrook Road. There's stormwater drainage infrastructure in Yellowbrook Road that extends and discharges to the bridge under Adelphia Road, over Adelphia Road.
Mike, real quick, the, the houses, I guess on Yellow, Squankham Yellowbrook, the houses across the street, are they serviced by sewer, or are they septic?
I'm not sure of the specific lots, but I think only the lot that might be adjacent to it was allowed to connect, but I'm not sure on those lots. Many of them are probably on septic as well.
Okay.
Let me, let me describe the adjacent uses. North across Adelphia Road is the ARE-2 zone. There's ARE-2 uses. I know for a fact, we did a septic design on the first house across the street, so I know that's on septic. Most of those properties are on septic with the exception of the Girl Scouts. Northeast across Adelphia Road is the Deli, if familiar with. That's in the ARE-2 zone. It's a pre-existing non-conforming use. East is block 157, lot 5.02. That's the site under construction for the Joseph Fazio Steel Business. It's approved by the planning board in 2015 for a 169,200-square-foot building, gravel storage area in the rear adjacent to Adelphia Road. And like this site, it fronts on two roads, as this site fronts on two roads for a majority of its frontage. South across Squonkam Yellowbrook Road are a variety of single-family residential uses. One property, lot 24, in block 156, contains multiple residential structures. The proposed site plan proposes the construction of a concrete brick manufacturing plant, bricks like this that you see, blocks like you know, the standard building block size.
Now, you say that, the eight-by-eighteens?
Eight-by-eight, by sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe there's other various sizes. The owner could better address that, but they can come in a variety of sizes.
Now, are they gonna be just concrete block? Are they gonna be split-faced designer block?
They're gonna be concrete, and I don't think you saw the end of the video, but there's a finishing process that the users are able to, the manufacturer is able to finish a face, different colors, different textures.
So, split-face?
Yeah.
Okay.
The manufacturing plant also is the associated hoppers along the westerly side of the building. There are two silos on the westerly side of the building, and there are four storage bins southeast of the building. The storage bins are for the raw materials, the gravel, the sand, the components that go into concrete. The silos, there are two silos, and they are proposed, one is for white cement and one is for gray cement, depending on the type of block they're manufacturing. Silos are 33 feet high, a little bit under 33 feet high, but they're less than the maximum height permitted in the zone. There's a gravel storage area. A 3,000-square-foot pole barn is attached to the south-westerly portion of the building, and that is for storage of materials, some of the storage of some of the things that are currently stored outside in that area. And there's also two 12,000-square-foot storage buildings that are for storage of work of block products that are manufactured as a result of this site plan. So, these two buildings are also for storage. The pole barn is really for existing material storage. Except for the hoppers and the silos that I previously described, and a portion of the equipment that takes those materials into the building, the operation is about 99% inside the existing building. The southern third, more or less, is being devoted to this use. The proposed use is a compatible use with the existing stone manufacturing business. The proposed hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, but Saturday opening is seasonal, and they're closed on Sundays. There will be a maximum of 20 employees. There is only one shift.
How many new employees?
I don't believe there's intention to raise any new employees.
There's a total of 20?
Total of 20, after the, after the block plant is put in use. Proposed site improvements include a 30-foot-wide gated driveway from yellow, Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. It would be paved for the first 50 feet, and then it's proposed to be gravel for the remainder. The drive continues through and would be paved for the first 50 feet from Adelphia Road and gated, so there's secure access. There's no unwanted access to the site when they're closed. The access drives would be curved for the curving turns and the 50 feet from each of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road and Adelphia Road. The easterly side of the drive off of Squonkam Yellowbrook Road would be curved up until the first storage building.
Mike, what, what, is there gonna be any sort of dust control there?
I'll get to that in a minute, but-
What's that?
I'll get to that in a minute. I believe it's pretty, yes, there is gonna be dust control. The owner could probably better address that, and I think there was an environmental statement prepared, and our environmental consultant appeared before the Environmental Commission, and I think you'll see a report that there are no comments by the Environmental Commission.
Okay.
So, the air quality is big-
It's not noisy and it's not dusty. No impact on air quality.
I'm talking about outside on the gravel drive. Trucks moving in and out.
Well, as you'll hear from the traffic engineer if he testifies, but there's not a lot of truck traffic that's associated. I'll get to that in a minute.
All right. You, you are having a traffic engineer, correct?
Yes, we do have a traffic engineer.
We do have one if you, if you, if you need, if you need some testimony from him.
There's a gravel area proposed south of the existing building. That area is for the storage of block materials, as well as, there's the bins for the raw material storage, and then there's a gravel circulation and maneuvering area between the existing building and the two storage buildings. As I said, the only pavement that's currently proposed is the first 50 feet from each of the roadways.
Mike, for the proposed concrete manufacturing block operation, so how do the materials get from the different stockpiles into the silos and into the plant? Is there some type of equipment that's used to do that? Is it conveyor belt, or how's it get in there?
From the bins to the hoppers, they have to be manually done with a small loader, Bobcat or something of that nature.
Okay. How high are the silos, and how is the material loaded into the silos?
I believe they're sucked in from the cement truck. They're from the bottom up-
Okay.
And they're not sucked up.
So, the, so silos are just for the cement, and then how does the actual aggregate get into like the manufacturing process? Is it like a hopper, and you load it into the hopper, and then it gets fed down into the plant, or how, how does that work?
It's an automatic process. That's, the materials are taken and mixed to the right proportions and run through the plant inside the building.
So, the, the question I'm getting is, depending on the type of equipment, you know, if we're talking about heavy loaders and things like that, typically the board requires those if they're gonna be stored outdoors on concrete pads, you know, for the diesel fuel and the hydraulic line, so you don't have any issues with groundwater infiltration.
The owner could best answer that if you want to hold off, or you could swear I'm in now, whichever.
So, to, yeah, we, I think we can wait it to firm and come on.
There's a stormwater collection system proposed that would take the water that flows from the northerly portion of this portion of the site, collects it, and pipes it to a stormwater management basin in the southeast corner. The basin is designed to meet all the best management practices. Then there's a pipe outlet to the existing storm system in Squonkam Yellowbrook Road that has been reviewed once by the Monmouth County Planning Board. We've now resubmitted, and it's currently being reviewed by the Monmouth County Planning Board. Their site landscaping consisted mainly of buffer plantings along the south and the north property lines. The applicant is also, in response to the many comments about buffers, extending the buffer around the entire periphery of the site. Along Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, it would be on a berm, and the planting would be on a three-foot berm. Along Adelphia Road, it's built at grade, the proposed, buffer is proposed to be planted at grade, and is subject to the review of your certified tree expert. The exception where we're asking for no buffer, there are some trees provided as a screening strip along the westerly, easterly property line common with the Fazio site, and that's predominantly in the northern portion of that line. That is intended to screen the residence, which is some 600 feet away from the industrial use on Fazio as well as the site itself. There's no screening proposed between that and the southerly intersection of that line with Squonkam Yellowbrook Road, as the buildings are set back at the minimum required 50 feet, which is a principal setback, but they're set back at 50, and the basin is in that area. And technically, between commercial uses, a screening strip is not proposed.
Nor is it required.
Thank you.
But it is required around your residential element.
Yeah, well, we'll have screening.
No, you gotta screen your business from that residential.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that in a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
There's chain link fencing that's proposed along Squonkam Yellowbrook Road. In fact, that will be around the entire frontage of the property as well as down the sidelines. So, it'll be an entirely fenced property. As you see, I don't know if you're, how many of you are familiar with the Fazio site?
It's totally, totally fenced.
Chain link fence is entirely around-
Now, are y'all using their chain link fence?
Or you probably connect to theirs on the westerly line and connect to them on the south.
Okay. You're not running your own fence?
I think they're on the line, if I'm not mistaken. We did that site plan, but we'll have to check. Forget permission.
Okay.
It doesn't make much sense to construct, too, but-
I, I understand, but I, I know in how our ordinance is with the fences, it's two different things, so.
Yeah, well, we're asking for a variance from the height of the fence. The chain link fence is proposed to be six feet, regardless of whether it's in a front yard or along the side yards. Now, remember, this site is encumbered by over 2,000 feet of front yard, so this chain link fence is in keeping with the non-commercial use of this property. The fence will be inside property owners, inside the proposed plantings. So, from a visual perspective, from the outside looking in, the height of the fence is really inconsequential.
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the six-foot fence, that's for residential properties, correct?
We don't, yes. I think for non-residential, it's-
Six-foot?
Six-foot, yeah.
Okay.
So, there's, there's no relief for that? You would need it relieved for the residential aspect of your property, though.
I mean, if, I would be safe and just request it because there is a residential use on this property, but as Mike said, it'll be on, it'll be interior to the landscaping around the perimeter and the berm, right? So, you know, I don't take any exception. It's a security-based fence, correct? It's for security purposes?
Well, it's on the outside of the plantings.
No, it's on the inside.
It's on the inside.
Okay.
And Jen, correct?
Got you.
Correct? Yeah.
I was looking at the yellow line. Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, I'm, I'm gonna kinda shut it down now at 10:30. I got guys, I gotta be up at 3 o'clock in the morning, so. I'm gonna ask one thing, to please think about it. Get rid of that residential use. I'm asked, that's something for y'all to discuss with the applicant, but I, I really would like to bring it into a commercial conformance without the residential, if, if possible. Other than that? Jen? Mike? Charles? Sherry? Okay.
Well, if I may, the residential use-
Yes.
-is being utilized by my client for his employees. They, they live on-site out there, so-
Yeah, but it still requires various-
I just, I just wanted to put that out there so the board understood. The use, it's not for-
I, I understand that.
-outside tenants. It's for his employees.
The board in the past, a lot of times, I, I'm gonna use the example Woolley's Restaurant. He hasn't had a residential house on that property, but he wanted to put the restaurant, he gave the residential up. And we, we do, we try to, the, the board's real lenient in a lot of aspects, but this is a major, you know, industrial development. To have residential in there, even Fazos, they don't have the residential element. And, you know, I, I don't know. It just, I'd like to clean it up if we could.
The other concern, Mr. Chairman, and we've seen this in a recent application before the board, is it could become problematic for you with respect to compliance with the noise ordinance because the residence is considered a sensitive receptor. We had that on another application that we've been hearing before the board.
They're tearing down two houses.
Well, I think they committed to either tearing them down or making them offices for the, for the use because of concerns with respect to the, the noise issue. So, I, I hear what the chairman's saying. I just, that was one, I would just check with that because if, let's say you come back and convince him that you won't need to keep it and what have you, that noise requirement is like DEP standards that the town has adopted. We've had a number of applications where noise has become an issue, and I would hate for you to put yourself in a situation where you cannot comply.
Do y'all have a noise testimony?
We, we do not have any proposed at this moment.
You, you, that's something you're gonna be required to-
We'll look into that, definitely.
I, I, for something of this magnitude, you're gonna be required.
I understand.
Okay. Okay, do we have another date?
We can do March 25th.
So, you okay with March 25th?
We have one-
We're just checking the calendar.
One use variance on the March 25th.
What do we have?
Eagle Oaks.
When's the, what's the following meeting?
Only one case. Or we can, or April 22nd again? Okay.
Is it April, what, what date is it?
Well, possibly March 25th. That's two weeks.
We, no, 25th doesn't work.
No, the 22nd's loaded.
Jen, I get that a lot.
Just carry two. There was nothing on. You just carry two.
I'm just betting.
Mike, you don't wanna do tree back-to-back that night. You're already two.
3/25 or 4/22, but I mean, you're gonna end up in the same position on April 22nd, probably.
Well, I would request if we are doing, if we, if we have the April 22nd, we would be heard first because we were, we were carried a few times.
I, I have an outside attorney that has to sit on a Kowalski, so I'm gonna do him first, right off the bat.
The other one, quite honestly, should be relatively quick, because we're pretty much finished in-
Yeah. The church, yeah, if they come back with it. Yeah, so, it, it might work for you, but Kowalski, I gotta get rid of that first. I gotta depose that first, right off the bat. I, I don't think it's gonna take that long. Mike, on the Kowalski matter, you think that? Now, I, I understand, but-
We always think it-
You, you being a planner, how, how, how long does you think it's gonna take to put the plan in testimony, the proofs?
I'm sure the pitch hitter will finish in short order. Yeah. We'll get that done quick.
Okay.
So, do April 22nd?
Do April 22nd.
Well, do April 22nd. We request being heard second, then.
Well, the church, church is all, all but complete. We just-
Well, who's first? So, you have to, never mind, never mind.
Kowalski's first.
I was putting that with the church. All right, I understand, I understand.
The thing of it is with the church, all, we just need their board of directors to say, yeah, we'll, we'll reconfigure it. We're done, we open to public. Okay.
So, the 22nd.
22nd, okay. Right. Case number BA-1827, Euro Supply, LL-LTD, DBA, Stone Quest LLC will be carried to April 22nd with no further notice.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for starting us tonight. I do appreciate that.
I, I at least wanted to get you started.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, any further business of the board? See, and now can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Sayah. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't it board adjourners? 10:35.